Welcome back. We are ready to begin our workshop session at 6:12 PM with a full quorum present. The first item on our agenda is social security coverage for state and local government employers. I believe Dr. Baker might be leading this conversation, or?
Yes, not Baker.
Yes. He was just here. Well, in the interim, why don't we move on to number two and we'll get him back in a moment. So we're having discussion to review Code Red Emergency Notification System. Actually, here comes Dr. Baker right now, Chief Elmore, if you would just...
Chief is always ready.
Dr. Baker, please, don't have a seat, come on down. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have the privilege of introducing Amy Lee, who is with the Employee Retirement System of Georgia, and she will be presenting a, or presenting a slide presentation on social security coverage for state and local government employers, and we will entertain questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Amy Lee. Good afternoon, I'm Amy Lee, I'm with the Employees Retirement System of Georgia.
Could you speak up a little, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Amy Lee, I'm with the Employees Retirement System of Georgia, and we serve as the State Administrator for Social Security Coverage for State and Local Government. The Social Security Act of 1935 was passed with the intent to provide a retirement for workers who didn't have one. At that time, state and local government employees were excluded. In 1951, there was an amendment, Section 218, that allowed for governmental employees who did not qualify to participate in a retirement plan to participate in social security. In 1955, that 218 coverage was extended to allow voluntary participation for governmental employees covered by a public retirement system as defined in IRC 3121 Rev. Prague 9140. In 1991, mandatory coverage came about, and mandatory coverage meant that any employee, state and local, who was not covered by a retirement system that was at least the equivalent of what social security coverage provided, was covered under mandatory coverage. Now, for state and local governments, if you're already covered under a retirement system that is considered a replacement plan by that IRC code, then you're excluded, and in order to participate in social security, you have to go through the referendum process and elect voluntary coverage. The IRS will always have final determination if a plan is considered a public retirement system. Generally, a defined benefit plan under the Safe Harbor Guidelines will qualify, and a defined contribution plan that contributes 7.5% employee or employer funds qualify. So if your retirement plan falls under either one of those and you desire to have social security coverage additionally, you have to go through the referendum process and make a modification to the state's 218 agreement. To start the referendum process, a letter of intent will need to be submitted to the state's Social Security Administrator. For the state of Georgia, the Administrator is Jim Potvin, the Executive Director of the Employees Retirement System. I act as the state's Social Security Coordinator and will work with you during the referendum process. 90 days' notice of referendum must be given prior to the vote, and this notice cannot be given until approved to the Governor. Therefore, this process can take between six to eight months to complete. The first step would be the letter of intent. A letter of intent from the governing authority of the specific political division must be received and include the effective date of coverage, desire for full coverage, any optional exclusions for part-time or elected officials, the federal tax number, the type of referendum that you wish to have held, confirmation of an election official, and proposed date of referendum. There are two types of referendums that can be held. You can hold a yes or no referendum, and that allows each individual voter to determine whether or not they want coverage without affecting anybody else's coverage. If you have 10 people voting and only seven want social security, seven can vote yes, three can vote no, and everybody gets what they want. Now, all future employees hired after that date will be covered, and anybody who does not vote will be covered. The other type of referendum is a 51%, and that would require at least 51% of the voting population to elect coverage. And at that point, the entire population would be covered, as well as any future employees. One thing to keep in mind is, once this coverage is voted for, there is no way to opt out of it. At that point, when you determine that you want coverage, you will be covered going forward. All of your employees will be covered going forward, and you can't at a later date decide you no longer want the coverage. As previously mentioned, 90 days' notice must be given prior to the vote, and the notice cannot be given until approved by the Governor. The proposed date of referendum should be at least five or six months after sending your letter of intent. This is a lengthy process because we deal with your agency, as well as the Governor's Office, as well as social security. There's just a lot of back and forth. Once the letter of intent has been received, further information and sample documentation will be provided to the election official. Now, one thing I mentioned earlier was an effective date of coverage. You can choose a date in the past and elect retroactive coverage if you would like. Now, once that referendum is held and everything is approved, you will owe funds back to that coverage date. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Some considerations of electing the coverage. Prior to the start of the referendum process, it's important to remember that once covered, there's no option to discontinue coverage. Another thing to keep in mind is the Weber GPO offsets. Those are going to apply to any time that you did not participate in social security. So if you elect coverage and you pay in all of your credits, but you have several years where you didn't pay into social security, when you go to collect your social security benefit, there should be an offset, there will be an offset. Now, there's a possibility those offsets might be changed in the future, but at this time, there would be an offset for that. So this could result in paying into social security but receiving a reduced benefit. Since your individual accounts can vary so much, if possible, what I strongly suggest before voting is that you go to your local social security office and determine where you are. If you've paid into social security on any previous jobs, if your spouse has paid into social security, find out how this would affect the benefit, because that's going to be your best way to vote for this coverage or not. Because again, once you vote for it, there's no backing out of it. So you really want to make sure that you're very comfortable with your vote and that you have all of the information available to you. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
It seems like there are three questions.
Yes, sir.
There are three possibilities that we have. We can say, "No, we don't want to go with this program at all." We can say, "Go with the one where you make a decision on an individual basis," or we can go with the one on a group basis.
Yes, sir.
The, like I said, I had a little trouble hearing, but the offset that you were talking about, that occurs on an individual basis.
Yes, sir.
And for some individuals on staff, it might make sense to not go.
Yes, sir.
For that reason.
Yes, sir.
So regardless of whether we go with the majority rule or the individual go-no-go, all new employees are going to be covered, and there's no real backing out after the fact.
Exactly. Now, if you go with the yes or no, where everybody gets an individual choice, all future employees will be covered. If you go with the 51%, and you don't reach that 51%, no one has coverage, not even the employees going forward.
So what goes through my mind then is that if we choose the go-no-go on an individual basis, then we'd be in a position, because the end result is still the same for new employees. Once you've elected the go-no-go individually, the new employees will all be in the program anyhow. Is that correct?
Councilman Clay, I'd like to interject. This is only for department heads.
I understand that, I understand, but new department heads. We will eventually have new department heads.
Yes, sir.
So they would be bound by whatever decision. If we choose either Option 2 or Option 3, which is to do something, then they will be bound by the deduction in the future anyhow.
That's correct.
Okay, so it would seem to me that the go-no-go on an individual basis would be fairer. It would allow those department heads who didn't want to do it to not do it, because the downside of it is that you will have more money taken out of your paycheck because you'll be paying FICA.
That is correct. My recommendation is that the go-no-go, as you stated, the yes or no vote, would be more, would allow more flexibility.
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like you and I are in by on an agreement that the way we would be fairest to everybody would be to go with the individual go-no-go, because the end result is the same going forward for everybody else.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I don't know, Dwight, whether you know or not, but why didn't we do this in the first place when we instituted the program? Because that program, I think, was instituted while I was on council, and it means more being taken out of your paycheck, which is one reason, I guess you could argue, for not doing it.
I can't really speak as to why we didn't do it now, but I think this is a better opportunity, or I think it's something that would be more beneficial to the department heads that are currently in the 401A plan, being that our general population employee have a pension plan, whereas the department heads who are in the 401A plan do not have any type of pension plan.
Right, right, so, but the regular employees don't have FICA either?
No, sir, they do not participate.
Yeah, okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carr?
Couple of things, but thank you for coming out. I got a few questions. In terms of some of, in terms of some of the other municipalities, have they adopted social security coverage?
That can be very, that's varied throughout the different entities. For example, the state of Georgia adopted blanket coverage for state employees, whereas teachers did not. The teachers have joined as they wanted to based on the school systems. Now, as far as a lot of small cities and towns, the state largely is covered. But again, this all comes down to what retirement plan you have in place and whether or not you are prepared to keep this going forward. So this isn't really a subject that we are able to advise on, because we're a neutral party. We're only here to make sure, to help you through the referendum process and make sure that people are in compliance.
Got you. Well, I think one of the things, Dr. Baker, we need to find out is our other surrounding municipalities, if they have this or not. The reason being, obviously, the job market is competitive, and department heads are going to be comparing apples to apples. So I'd like to know if, for example, if East Point has opted into this, or Union City, or the city of South Fulton, or Fairburn, or Alpharetta, and so on and so forth. So if we could find out and get a matrix together. I didn't know if you did this city to city.
We did. We retained the records.
Are there any metro cities that you know of that have adopted this?
Yes, I mean, a lot of different cities adopted this back in 1955 when it was available.
Okay, so any that you know of, or?
Off the top of my head, I would have to go back through our records, but I'll be happy to provide that information.
Okay, so we could get a list of surrounding, you know, Cab County, Fulton County, Clayton.
Now, again, this is going to depend, because with counties, you may have different...
I'm speaking to the cities within the counties.
Okay.
That way we'll, you know, comparables. The other question is, so so I heard that if we add the once we add this coverage, this will be in addition to the retirement plans that we already have. Okay, you saying yes and he's saying no.
No.
Okay, what's the difference?
Department heads do not contribute to a retirement plan. We have a 401A defined benefit plan, which is...
That's what I mean.
Yeah, it would be in addition to that, correct.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. So that goes in addition to that, and we split the difference.
6.2% for the, for the city and 6.2% for the employees.
Right, I read that. Now, you mentioned that once we vote, that there's no backing out of this, but then I also heard that you said that employees have the option to pay in some years and not pay in other years? Is that, or did I hear that incorrectly?
No, sir. This coverage is based on retirement system coverage and position. So if you have a qualifying plan that excludes you from the mandatory coverage, you would have to have the referendum to participate, and once the referendum was approved, that coverage would be there going forward. What I mentioned as far as possibly having years where you did not pay into social security, like, for example, the past five years for anyone here who did not pay into social security, only paid into the city plan. When you go to draw your social security, your benefit will be offset by the years you did not pay in. So that's why I suggested that any of the voting population go to your local office and see if they can give you an advice on what you have or what you've participated in and how voting for this coverage may affect them.
Okay, well, I guess going, you mean the local social security office?
Yes, sir.
Well, we know we haven't done this because we haven't ever done this. Is that right, Dr. Baker?
Yeah.
Okay, so we know there is no past history of how it's gone for us, because we haven't...
Unless someone has worked for another employee outside of the city, they would perhaps...
Oh, lots of folks have done that, okay, okay. Oh, you mean with other jobs?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm getting to understand. Okay, I thought you meant in terms of here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so I think city department heads definitely deserve this. They have a lot of weight on their shoulders. I think it's something that we need to really consider. Obviously, this is a workshop, we're not going to be voting on this, but I'll also say I was interested in the retroactive stipulation, and my thinking would be, if we do go retro, that I'd like to at least go back to 2020 at the height of the COVID pandemic. I just put that in for the record. But, you know, I think it's something that we needed to really look at and consider. I think the individual vote makes the most sense if we consider it as well.
Councilman Carr, I also like to say, correction to what I stated earlier. We do have our part-time employees, they do participate. They do contribute to the social security coverage, yes. So I say corrected on that.
Now, I understand that this is only for department heads, is that what I heard?
Only to, for members that participate in the Mission Square Retirement Plan, the 401A.
Okay.
Which are basically department heads, yes.
So you're saying part-timers have an option for this too?
No, part-timers do currently contribute to FICA.
Oh, they do FICA, okay, got it, okay, all right, that's all I had.
Councilman Allen?
First of all, thank you very much. We got together this afternoon and went over a lot of questions, and I appreciate all your comments. I think by looking at the go-no-go proposal, letting the individual make the decision, then it's their decision. If you go to the 51%, it's not really their decision in a lot of cases. So I think, I think you've got to do the no, the go-no-go, the yes or the no. And each individual gets to make that decision on their part, so.
Yes, sir.
That's my, that would be my recommendation.
Councilman Gay?
Oh, I have a quick question coming. Are the state workers drawing social security?
State, full-time state workers covered under the Employees Retirement System, yes. They are covered for social security as well as the state retirement system.
Because my wife is at 23 years, and we had an opportunity to work with your department, so let me give you a shout-out, the staff are very professional, so you've done an amazing job with your staff.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we've got a discussion to review Code Red Emergency Notification Systems, policy for discussion, consideration, and potential action. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, this discussion is regarding our Code Red Emergency Notification System. System has been in place since 2008, 2009. I think the discussion was whether we just use the system for emergency notifications. And in the past, we have not, we've used it for non-emergency notifications, such as Fire Safety Expo. We've used it for announcing award meetings. We've used it for during the Christmas holidays for the Santa coming to town. But I would say over the last 10 years, we have used it for other events other than emergency notifications. And I know in the packet, I did mention that we are thinking about going to the Fulton County Falcons Notification System, which I would recommend, and I think we've talked to you all in the past that we were going to that. So hopefully, within the next, I would say, three weeks to a month, we should have the, everything ironed out. We're going to have to go through maybe a few weeks of a testing phase, and once we do that, I think we'll be able to go online with the Falcon system. Now, that Falcon system, we will be able to notify, just like Fulton County notify all of their residents in Fulton County, we will be able to notify the citizens in College Park. So it'll be catered to the city of College Park. So any emergency notifications. And one of the great things, we could also use it for non-emergency communications, notifications also.
Thank you, Chief. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
Yeah, Chief, I think you've seen my problems. First off, our policy says, under usage, that Code Red should, will be used only for emergency notification. And to your point, we have used it for more things other than that. Furthermore, in the policy, it talks about non-emergency use, and it says, "If sufficient advance warning exists, other means of notifying the public should be used: newspapers, government, access, television, et cetera, et cetera." So the problem I have, I've never used Code Red for an award meeting or anything. The reason, one reason I haven't done that is nursery, old nursery tale, you know? The boy who cried wolf. And I get notifications on literally all my devices. So when there's a Code Red alert, I get it on the phone, my iPad, my iPhone, my computer, you name it, I get blasted, and we get it on the home phone. We still have a landline. And that's okay if a tornado is coming. And it's okay if, and even in the marginal area of a warming station. Okay, that can be a life or death thing. It doesn't impact everybody, but we've got to worry about everybody. So in that, I don't have a problem using Code Red for that. But when we've known that we were going to have a national night out, or we've known that we were going to have some kind of a big award meeting or something like that, there's plenty of opportunity to use other communication that we don't have to, because I've actually talked to one or two people who haven't really paid much attention to Code Red. And the reason, it's the boy who cried wolf again. They haven't paid attention to it because, well, they're just announcing that it's another national night out, or it's another this award meeting, or this or that. Only this time, it's actually a tornado coming. And so I don't think we should be using what is considered to be the life or death kind of thing, emergency notification. I don't think we should be using it for anything else but that. And I would include things like warming station, because it is, can be life or death in some cases, even though hopefully we take care of that. So the next question that comes to mind then is, if we do adopt the Falcon system, it's not clear to me, I wouldn't have a problem if we called Code Red Code Blue, or Code Green, or Code Purple, or Code Happy. But then just use it to announce award meetings and national night out and things like that. It's code communication, it's code, keep the citizens informed. And then you use Falcon for just emergencies and, and all emergencies. But I think we, if we're going to use two, it can't be confusing that sometimes we use Falcon to announce national night out, but other times it's tornadoes, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know, I don't know much about Falcon, you know, I've signed up for it, but I don't really know which would be the preferred notification system. And if every announcement on Code Red is preceded by a statement, "This is Code Red", well, Code Red doesn't sound like something for just notifying casual things. So I'm definitely not in favor of using Code Red anymore to announce anything but emergencies. I've had that problem for a number of time. I just haven't said anything particularly before, because we weren't using it quite as much. But then if we don't use it for anything else, where does Falcon fit in? Do we use Code Red for just life or death kind of emergency things? And we use Falcon to announce, can we use Falcon to announce things like national night out and...
Yes, they did mention that we can use it for non-emergency events.
Okay, well, see, that would be my recommendation then, that we use Code Red to announce, Code Red sounds serious to me. So if people get used to that and that we use it just for life-threatening emergencies, then we use Falcon for just general citizen notification. You know, you could even tell them, "We're going to have a council meeting tonight." Remind them to come to council meeting, you know, whatever you want to, whatever you want to use it for. That would be my recommendation.
Councilman Carr?
All right, thanks, Chief. A couple of things. The Falcon announcement, I am familiar with Falcon. How does Falcon announce, is that opening announcement changeable? How do they announce?
If I'm not mistaken, it is changeable. I know over the last year or two, since it's been in place, I get the Falcons notification for tornadoes, for flash flood warnings. And when it comes across on you, when you answer your phone, it comes across, it gives you an announcement that this is Fulton County Falcon Notification System, and it goes into, "There's a flash flood warning."
Okay, so Falcon may be a little milder in a sense, but it's still a jarring, it's still emergency, an emergency-oriented notification, I think, from the way I understand it. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. Obviously, I think we need a milder version of what we're doing. But there's a bigger problem to this. The reason we've been having to use Code Red for things that may not be Code Red, they may be, like Ambrose mentioned, Code Happy. I think for sure Councilman Allen would be all in for Code Happy. I think for sure Councilman Allen would be all in for Code Happy. But, uh, the, the, the big issue is we're having to use this because we do not have any sort of comprehensive communications with the majority of this city at all. And that therein lies the problem. Falcon and Code Red are utilitarian, emergency-oriented, urgency-oriented type announcements. Falcon is Fulton County's version of Code Red. I've been talking about it, uh, for a while, since I've gotten back here, reaching out to our residents. Communications are very important. I understand we are collecting email addresses with customer service. And how persistent that is, I do not know. But in two thousand and twenty-three, it's obvious it needs to be persistent. I'm told that it is persistent. Now, Thia, is that happening with every customer that comes in and turns on? That we have a field for email addresses?
There is a field on the application for email addresses. Now, um, how consistent we are with that, I would have to, um, check with William, but the direction is to make sure that we pick up all email addresses so we can notify the, um, resident or the customer.
And city manager, one, one thing I would suggest is that we go on and make that mandatory, where we make sure when a new resident comes into the city, that we get the email address as we turn on the electricity or get them set up with their business or whatever it is they're coming in, in terms of coming into the city officially. Also, when they're exiting, if they're turning off electricity and moving, I would say maybe we take that field out because we do close out a utility account, water account, sanitation account as people are leaving. Is that correct? Well, I think we can keep tabs on things that way. Uh, most cities have a mass email, uh, system that, that, that's comprehensive for these types of things. In terms of communication with our city, it's a little more unique. A lot of cities communicate by newspaper print, a lot of them by television. We're not like other cities. The reason being is that most residents do not get the city's legal organ. You go into television, well, most of the city residents do not have cable television that gets CP twenty-three necessarily. So our communications, we need to definitely target, and I've been talking on it month on end, for getting some good communications together. Falcon and Code Red are good, but we need a base communications model that works for all of our residents. Again, with us being seventy-five percent rental in apartments, these people are mostly in the dark about everything that is going on in this city. Those parents that rent, which is seventy-five percent of this population, do not know what's going on with parks and rec, when the enrollment starts for this, when the summer programs kick off for that, and so on and so forth. We depend on communications for that. We are seventy-five percent rental. And that simply means we have to adjust our communications according to our target audience. And that means if we have to knock on every single apartment door and get the information we need, then that's what we need to do because if we can't talk to our residents, it's kind of hard to keep people informed when you don't know who you're talking to or who you're reaching. Now, we have the College Park newsletter. I think the system setup is kind of a little bit backwards, in my opinion. The reason why I say that is because it's an opt-in. A person can go on our website and decide to opt into the newsletter. I think that's the backwards way to do it because that means anybody from anywhere can sign up for our newsletter. And we have a list of unknown people from unknown places that we may be sending out the newsletter to. And it's not a bad idea that we're sending out a newsletter to somebody in Denver, Colorado, and they're getting it because they opted in. It's not a bad thing. But the problem is the residents that live here know nothing about this because a lot of them don't have internet, so they don't have an option to opt in. We, we need to enroll them in. That way, we get our residents and maybe have a separate tier for our residents. So when we have to reach someone with something that's routine and mundane, we know who we're talking to. One thing about communications is you got this end and you dial somebody, you, 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 on the other end, you need to know who it is you're talking to. When COVID was here, when the pipes froze in December, when we had that whole thing, we sent out, uh, email blasts. And I'm asking the question, well, who are we talking to? Are we talking to our residents or people that have happened to scroll online and enrolled in the newsletter? And the answer was, and this was the answer, well, Councilman, we don't know exactly who we're talking to. And that's a serious issue. And, and, and so, so we really need to consider taking a look at how we're communicating and redoing it. Now, I'm able to pick up the phone and I can call an apartment manager and I explain to them, hey, we're in need of information, we have special events taking place consistently that our residents are not aware of. There are notices that need to go out from time to time. And our website only gets word out, uh, to folks that log on to the website. Uh, a lot of our residents in our apartments don't have the internet service. More of our apartment residents don't have cable television, you know? So I tell them we need direct email contacts to send utility notices, discounts, parks and rec events, development updates, all this type of stuff. Keeping residents informed is very important and we need to restructure how we communicate, I think, so that we have a third rail in addition to Falcon and Code Red. But we should have the base rail should be our direct communication with our direct residents. And we don't have that yet. So I'd like to see us get that together in addition, I mean, Falcon makes the obvious sense to have that. But, but we don't have the basic. I, I guess that's my point. We need the basic, so.
Mr. Halloran?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with what Councilman Carr has, has said. And I think there is a, um, I'll call it a strategic plan that's usually known as a communications plan. And I know that we have not completed the formulation of that. And that is going to be moving along, uh, with some of the restructuring changes that I'll be getting into at a later date. The other thing, and I'm going to ask Michael Hicks, uh, to come up because I want to make sure that from a practical standpoint, that we're on the same page as far as actions that the mayor and council have already taken in terms of enhancing our practical communications. My understanding, Michael? Because I need Michael Hicks to fill in the, fill in the blanks. At one point, we were looking at a plan that would supersede all of our current systems, I guess, the, um, Code Red along with the, the plan, what I notify is it? Which would address what Councilman Carr was describing as not only an emergency such as Code Red, uh, system, but then a system that for these more non-emergency-centric type of communications. So, Michael, give the council a review of what they recently approved that goes towards addressing the points that Councilman Carr just made.
Sure. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Stanley is certainly correct. We did our due diligence by looking at three different software packages. And I brought these software packages before you. It was I notified that we currently have. And we looked at, uh, another software package that we could send information to residents. We could do a one-to-one communication with them. And we were almost sold on this particular package, Omni Alert. Uh, but Omni Alert couldn't fulfill the other part of the communication that we were looking for, and that is, uh, mass notification and getting information back. And so we went back with C Click Fix because that's what we started with. We started looking at C Click Fix, and I brought that before you. You guys approved that. So C, C Click Fix will be able to do some of those quote-unquote mundane things that you talked about. Uh, C Click, we'll be able to communicate with citizens, we'll be able to get communications back to them. Uh, we'll be able to pull reports to see who responded. We'll be able to pull reports to show you guys exactly where we are in terms of notifying residents. So Councilman Carr, some of those mundane things that you talked about, C Click Fix will be able to fix some of those.
And, and I'm glad to hear that, and I know we, we've been working on that. Now, you know, I notify the C Click Fix, though, you know, those are speaks-to complaint based. I get that category. The reason this came up is because apparently I was told, uh, uh, we sent out some messaging via Code Red that may not, or may not have been considered Code Red-type emerg- emergency-oriented type of thing. The problem is, I wasn't so adamant and had an issue with that because we don't have an effective, we, actual mainstream weekly communications portal. So if that's the only way we can reach everyone because our email system address i- is, is, is a bag of mixed beans, then that was why I said, well, either that or, 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 or nothing because our email address, we don't know who we're reaching. So I said to myself, it's all we had right now. The, the issue is, again, communications, just in general, getting a comprehensive communications plan. The C, this, the I notified C Click Fix will solve the complaint issues. But just the mainstream weekly notices, that's the communications department that handles that, I think, day to day.
Sure, if I can add some, uh, information to that. Uh, I think we are working with customer service to make sure that we get the emails, uh, from citizens. And also, uh, Chief, if I could also add, uh, we, we were not planning to keep both of those Code Red and, uh, Falcon because Falcons can do everything what Code Red is doing and more. So we weren't gonna keep both of those. We was gonna eliminate Code Red and use Falcon for mundane calls and for emergency calls as well. So Falcon can do both. It can solve that.
Can we divide Falcon? Again, it says this is a Falcon alert from Fulton County. Will it say this is a Falcon notice from College Park?
Yes.
It'll say? Okay, so that gives us the division. And it wants, now, when Fulton County calls with a Falcon alert, that's, let's say it's a county-wide issue and they send out their Falcon alert, it'll be county, a county-wide issue. Our local issue will be local. Okay, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and also, last but certainly not least, we're also able to break Falcon up into wards as well.
Excellent.
If we want to send something out to Ward Two, we can send it out to Ward Two only. We made clear that that's what we wanted from Falcon. And we've already given them that information. We're waiting for them to upload it so we could test it.
And this is free?
Yes.
You can't beat that with a stick.
Can we self-select? Can individuals say, I only want emergency notifications with, with Falcon? Can I say, these are the types of notification I want? Because with C Click Fix, because I'm on, uh, East Point C Click Fix because of the pilot we did a year or so ago. And you could, you could opt in to what kind of notifications you wanted to get. I don't get all of East Point's notifications. I just get certain ones.
So you're asking if they can opt in and opt out to certain notifications? Let us check that, Chief, when I'm not.
Yeah, you know, classify them.
Councilman Clay, Councilman Clay. Let me, let me get down the line and I'll come back to you, okay?
Well, I thought we were back. Oh, you haven't.
I haven't, I haven't gotten there.
You haven't done that?
Councilman Allen?
Okay. My concern, I think we need to have one for emergencies. If we want to have another one that's separate or can be split off, I think that's great for other information. My concern is you get this information from Fulton County and then you send it out. Is that correct? How does that, how does Falcon work exactly?
That is correct. And, uh, we also, I also receive, um, other notifications from the National Weather Service directly. So once I get that, uh, that information, we're going to share it with the city like we normally do.
My concern, and you, we need to take a look at it, is there's a lot of citizens in my ward who live in Clayton County. How do we, how do we contact those people in Clayton County? I mean, if, if you have a house on Jones Circle or somewhere else in Clayton County and you get a notice for Fulton County, what, what do we do to let them know there's an emergency?
See, I don't wanna just say it, but, um, those people that live in College Park, uh, on Jones Circle, that's in Clayton County, they should be able to go to the website once we post it and be able to sign up for it.
Okay, so we need to make sure that they sign up for it in Clayton County as well, okay? And then they will be able to get that information? Okay, that was the only question I had. We just need to make sure they're included in, make sure that they're covered, okay?
Councilman Gay?
I think, I think, uh, Chief, you just said that we've used Code Red for various things, national night out, non-emergency. I used Code Red for a town hall meeting about three weeks ago. And may have prompted this conversation, and I'm glad it did because we all agree that we do need an alternative way to communicate to our residents. For years, I've been on council, it's been daunting to just have to update emails, call people, go home, send them. I mean, it's just been, so it goes to show that we just need a more robust, uh, city manager, we need a more robust communication department. So I'm glad that, I'm glad that. Also, I got a text from Council, Councilwoman Natasha Williams Brown. And as it turns out, they're able to send out texts citywide. It could be Falcon, I don't know what the program is, but you may want to call over to the folks at City South Fulton because they, they light years ahead of us already. Because as Councilman McCorn said, we don't, really don't have no options. We needed to get people to meet our city manager, our new public works director, our engineer, our building director. So we needed a way to get people to come out and, and meet those folks, and that's why we did it. So now that it's out, now we need to get another way of doing it. So one last thing I say, regardless of what app you use, it's all based on data that's got to come from IT. So maybe you don't even have to say Code Red, maybe you still use it, don't say Code Red because it's still based on the same data in the meantime.
What we'll do is we'll check it and, and see if we could call it something else rather than Falcon. We may come up with another name for it if we're using it here within the city.
Councilman Clay, if I want?
No, I, I just believe that we need to segregate emergency from non-emergency. And there's whole systems of sending text messages as well. And the one other comment I'd make is just because people don't have cable TV or internet service wired, almost every U and B on the planet, at least in our portion of the planet, has a cellphone. And anybody with a cellphone these days can go to a website and they can get text notifications. So it is possible for people even who don't have wired internet service or wired cable TV to be aware of what's going on if we just let them know, Joe, what?
They've gotta know that the service exists.
Yeah, I mean, you can only do so much. That's all I had.
Councilman Carr?
Yeah, uh, it's just a matter of communic- communications. We, we're coming up with a good communications plan. How do you reach out to a very transient population that's constantly got high turnover? So communications probably needs to figure that equation out and come up with some options, maybe put it on a workshop in terms of how we're gonna reach our residents. We gotta meet our residents where they are. The likelihood of an apartment resident, single person with a family, working, whether they're gonna jump on the city website to see what's going on is slim to none at the end of the day. It's not gonna be a big priority to them. However, if they come into the city and we, uh, onboard them in terms of utilities, something like that, it's, that's, I think that's the opportunity. But we just gotta make sure we have a system in place to catch everyone. And as they leave, purge our list so that we're not talking to residents that have moved. So that's, that's much, those are my suggestions.
Councilman Allen?
No, I think we've all talked about, I think we're all on the same page.
Councilman Gay?
No comment.
Chief, I'm already. Chief, I'm already signed up for Falcon, so I get the alerts from Fulton County when there are countywide events going on in terms of severe weather or other emergencies. So what does that look like for someone who's already signed up with Falcon, if the city of College Park signs up as well?
If I'm not mistaken, we may have to have your re- resign again for College Park, 'cause I think we're gonna have a separate, uh, sign-up from Fulton County.
So I think the- the challenge that we might face is that I- I think there- there is consensus that we need essentially two tracks of communication to make sure that folks who want the emergency information get that, and that they are paying attention to that and keyed into that, at the same time that folks who want the information regarding community events and the like also have access to that as well. Using Falcon for both of those things, and that, since Fulton County's already using it strictly for emergencies, I think would be a little problematic for us to use it for community events.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because i- it, we're not going to change how Fulton County uses it. So, uh, it may be a better option to use Code Red, call it something different, let people know, "Hey, we're transitioning this- this line to community events, and for emergencies, this is how- this is how you get the information via Falcon." Because, I mean, we can- we can do a Code Red to let people know that we're making that transition, uh, and encourage them to- to sign up, or something along those lines. But if Fulton County's already using Falcon for- for emergency alerts, I think it might cause additional confusion if we use it for a different purpose.
Well, and that's, Mayor, that's what I was saying. Both of those aren't the proper vehicles. But we can't skip over the fact we have a department that's supposed to handle this and put together a proper vehicle. That's the problem. And we're opting with two inappropriate uses that we've been using for National Night Out and these things, because we don't have an effective communications program. That's probably the issue, more at hand, why we even looking at this.
So as I was saying, Chief, is there an option, is there an opportunity to transition Code Red, um, to a community-based information portal, and then use Falcon for emergency alerts?
Let me do some research, and I'll get back with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief, appreciate it. The next discussion during workshop is a discussion to amend the code of ordinances uh, to increase depart- the department director and designate approval threshold and competitive bid and contract approval threshold. Mr. Hawthorne, or no, Mr. Moody, good evening.
Good evening. Um, come before you just to start discussion on increasing the threshold for purchases and, uh, solicitation from the current ten thousand to raise it up to twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand to be more streamlined and, uh, help us through this process. As we've noticed, rates have gone up on numerous, numerous items, as Councilman Carr always says, "I remember when." So we're at that stage trying to be able to attain supplies when needed at an easier pace.
Thank you, sir, we'll start with Councilman Clay.
I think I got most of my questions answered, I'm not... I'm still trying to make up my mind whether I- I agree with the higher approval rate. Uh, we did straighten out the chart, there were some mathematical gaps in the chart kinda thing. Um, but the only thing I worry about, and- and- and I shouldn't probably worry about it, because we've got a new sheriff in town, a new city manager. Uh, in retrospect, before he came on, and as- as it states in here, we weren't actually following- following our policy. We were approving things, uh, we were allowing things to go through, uh, at a higher approval level on the lowest level. And it's not a big deal, but, uh, that was happening, and it was- it was going on. So if we were adding a second, a- a fourth approval level, as I recall on here, and, um, we're raising the department head approval level from, to a higher level, we're definitely raising the city manager's approval level. Uh, I just wanna make sure that we- we gotta follow, solidly follow this procedure. And like I say, we've got a new sheriff in town, and, um, it's his job to keep tabs on- on what's, uh, what's getting approved and what's not, so, um... I guess, I- I- I just get nervous when I see approval levels going, what, from five hundred to, what is it, ten thousand?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. A five hundred to five thousand, right? That's a factor of ten. And, uh, but that's the lowest level, and I realize it'll reduce the amount of paperwork. Uh, but- but we have to be sure that we- that we have the, uh, they have the appropriate, uh, how shall I say? We don't have to go out for a bid, but we are expecting at the lower level to look at obtaining three different prices. You don't go through a formal bid process. But if we relax the authority, so that now you can do that at a much higher level, then you really, really, really need to make an effort to go out and get three different prices, even though you don't go through the formal bid process. And those are the kinds of things I worry about, you know, when- when you raise a level. That it- it's- it's good to have good intentions, but it's very easy to say, "Well, if it's not on the books, if it's not a specific requirement in the- in the, uh, in the rules and regulations, that, well, uh, yeah, we, well, we were in a hurry." Or, you know, it was, we just didn't know of anybody else, couldn't think of anybody else, and we had to get this out, so we didn't really look at three possible prices. And of course, at this level, we didn't have to go through a formal bid. So I'm just saying that we need to watch this more closely. Um, I think city manager wants to comment.
Yes, um, and I- I probably should have offered this over for you at the beginning. Uh, but I- I want to tell you what triggered, uh, the finance department purchasing division to bring this item before you, because it's I clipping in the work for, um, for several months. Um, shortly after I got here, and I certainly was familiar with the, uh-
Sonny, could you speak up a little bit more, please?
Shortly after I- shortly after I got here, and I was certainly familiar with, uh, the threshold of the ten thousand dollars for, uh, the city manager. And I had been here for several weeks, and the staff kind of, you know, they played softball for me and transitioned me in, uh, easily. But around the fifth or sixth week, I'll say, um, they presented to me, um, all of the signatures that I needed to sign off on. And as I recall, uh, when Sonia handed me the folder, she said, "This is a little bit behind, this is two weeks' worth." And it was a folder yas-o big. And I got started that morning signing, mind you, all of this was- was manual. And I was convinced that the more I signed, the more that the signatures were multiplying. And at some point, I called up Mr. Moody, 'cause at this point, I'm kind of alarmed at all of these manual documents, and each document had multiple places that I had to sign. And quite frankly, I didn't know what I was signing. And then Ms. Philora Bradley came to my office, and, um, I- I- I somewhat went into, um, a resistance mode. And so I had the conversation, and, uh, they got started to bring this before you. What has happened in the meantime, and this was something that had started before I got here, but we really hadn't implemented it, and that was automating our signatures for documents. So we have made a pretty big conversion over to automatic signatures now. And that makes such a difference, 'cause now I don't have to wait for all of these folders manually to reach my desk. Uh, on a daily basis, you know, I may be signing ten or twenty per day. But I will tell you, even though the department director's level is currently at five hundred dollars, and what Councilman Clay was referring to was practically at some point, because it was just impossible, they started operating at a level of a thousand dollars. Now, did we go through all of the formal process to make that happen? But even on those things that, uh, come up to, let's say, five thousand or seventy-five hundred dollars, what I most look for, if I'm to get any other substantive work done, is the checks in the system, knowing that the department director has signed off, that the finance director is signing off on those that she needs to look at. And so that's the totality of the system that we're- that we're looking at. So even if the mayor and council don't see fit to raise the thresholds tonight, which I am recommending, uh, the very fact that we have made such progress with automating our system doesn't make this quite, uh, the emergency that I had raised back a few months ago. But I also think if you apply just some logic, and I can't tell you the exact year that the ten thousand dollars, as an example, went into effect, because it is in the- it is in the charter. And I looked at, uh, the documentation, you know, it could go back, 'cause I didn't get to ask, nineteen fifty-eight? I think the most recent changes were nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, and I think Councilman Allen was even making this point in one of his recent, uh, commentaries at the end of the meeting. Uh, if you apply inflation alone to those numbers, there was the intent of the policymakers back then, uh, that obviously there's a trust at this level of ten thousand or one thousand for department directors, that if nothing else, some adjustment over time due to inflation itself. So that's the ask tonight, if you're not comfortable enough, uh, having an automated system, it's already making it easier.
Councilman Carr?
Well, a couple of things, um, first thing I'd say, um, you know, folks elected us to spend this city's money, uh, like it's coming out of our own pocketbooks. And every time I make a decision up here, I'm gonna base it on just basically using some common sense. Um, the reason why we set a five thousand dollar threshold is so that generally, the process of expediting funds, uh, was up here, because of the simple fact that we are the residents. Um, I understand the convenience of it, I understand the signature issue. Um, but keep a couple of things in mind, uh, knowing the reason why we set some of these things in place. When we were at five thousand dollars, uh, for the city manager, we had a fund balance sixty-five percent ca- in cash reserves. Part of that limited threshold was why we were able to keep track of the pennies the way we had been able to in- for so many years. That was the reason why we were able to afford things like the convention center and the Gateway Arena, because we kept tight reins on the pocketbook. Um, we have not been following our own policy. And there have been instances where allowing approval was above the allowable limit have happened. When I was in the county as commissioner, I saw funding of contracts and projects that were above the ten K limit, but they were coupled together at nine thousand five hundred dollars, coupled together as a complete one project. But, uh, that's what you call, I guess, an administrative dodge, so to speak. And most of y'all weren't here then, some of you all were, uh, but, uh, we were at five K when we had a strong fund reserve. When we went to ten K, I was not for going to ten thousand. Uh, I wanted to keep a tight lid on things, I didn't think it was a good idea. Uh, this body did it anyhow. And now we're talking about going from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. We're at less than half of the fund balance we had when we were at five thousand. Again, you know, being conservative with our money means, at the end of the day, making sure that we give the nod when a check gets written. Uh, I mean, their corporation's much larger than us. Uh, I- I think about, uh, Harpo, which is, uh, Oprah Winfrey's corporation, multi-billion dollar corporation. Hundreds, probably thou- thousand employees, maybe. She still signs every single check herself. And the reason is, because she knows how far th- how fast things can get out of hand if someone else is signing the checks. So I don't think going to twenty-five thousand, when we're still in the financial situation we are in, is a good idea. Um, so, uh, and at five K, when our department heads budgeted, uh, I think they were a bit more meticulous with that budget. Um, and the signatures, the physical signatures were part of the accountability. Accountability. That was a big part of it, I mean, those were checks in the system. Um, so, you know, I've seen agenda items that were not signed off by the appropriate departments sometimes, you know? And, you know, I'm no accountant, but at the end of the day, I- 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 I, you know, my consideration was going back to five thousand, honestly, based on our fund balance, you know? But again, that's just my opinion. I've been up here and I've seen a lot of things happen, and I've seen how things can go out of hand very quickly. And it's nothing, uh, you know, against what you all are proposing, but at the end of the day, we are the stewards of this budget. And if we don't have tight controls, things can get out of hand pretty quickly if everybody's able to sign off on things at those amounts. So I- I- I'm not, I'm not for this. Uh, now, our city manager's just getting in, getting acclimated. When I start to see some accountability in addition to some of these changes, uh, accountability, which is gonna be a big component of the changes that we're gonna be making, uh, I'd say, "Let's see how it goes and take a look at it," I guess at that point. But, uh, I don't think this is a good idea right now.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, uh, what are other cities around, uh, looking, have you kind of talked to the other cities and see what- what's going on?
The city of East Point actually has a threshold of twelve thousand five hundred for department levels, and they go out to bid after three quotes.
I'm sorry, but what did, what, what did-
Twelve thousand five hundreds for the city of East Point?
Ten thousand five hundred for who?
City of East Point.
For what, what?
For the department. Oh, I'm sorry, the departments sign up to, uh, two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
How much?
Two thousand, twenty-five hundred for department head designate.
Twenty-five hundred for a department head?
Yes.
I thought I heard twelve thousand.
That's when they go out for competitive bid at twelve thousand five hundred.
So what is the city manager's level?
The twelve thousand five hundred.
Twelve thousand five hundred?
Yes. City of South Fulton actually is looking almost close to our range. They're between two thousand five hundred to twenty-five thousand. Once they're looking at theirs, they'll go out to bid over twenty-five thousand. State of Georgia, three bids, three quotes, I'm sorry, up to the twenty-five thousand threshold as well. And then if you look at the Cab County, Fulton County, they're at fifty thousand each before they start soliciting.
Okay. My suggestion would be that, you know, we take a look at this at maybe that threshold, and then take another look after we see how it goes. I think if we have department heads, we need to rely on their ability. We have required approvals for every single one, and I like that. I like all the required approvals. So my suggestion would be go to like half, twenty-five hundred, like you said, and then go to, you know, maybe fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, and then go up higher. After we take a look at it, after several months.
Is that it?
Councilman?
Councilman Gay?
Well, I think when the city manager discussed the signature, being able to do, being able to sign, docket sign, I think that was one of his first concerns. He started by saying the volumes of paperwork. I think he was saying to us that he minimized that because of the new system IT introduced. The second thing is that, you know, I asked for this body to receive a city manager's financial report, and it was approved unanimously. And to this day, we've not received those reports. The only time we receive them is when I remind finance. So for me, it goes down to checks and balances, not so much the volumes of reports he has to sign or increasing the spending limit because of inflation. I think the spirit of it was for checks and balances. So that being said, for me, I would like for the start getting back to seeing the city manager report. I've not seen them for the last three city managers in them. That was my comfort level of being able to track it. So, like I say on Shark Tank, it's gonna be a no for me. But the last thing I'll say to you is that I think you should also look at having more manpower in the one-man office. You know, I think it goes back to our communications department. I think a lot of this can be augmented by if you start, and I'm sure your organization chart is gonna address this, but I think kind of looking at procurement, purchasing, and all of that, I think all those go hands and hands with this ask. I don't think it's just a solo ask. I think we need to bring back some other things that gives us a comfort level for that.
Yes, sir. Mayor, in the, I guess in the spirit of compromise, I guess I would request status quo, I think, is difficult. And so we're talking about two levels. City manager authority before it has to come to the mayor and council, and then department director level. Department director level now under books, and I think that's what we should go by, is five hundred dollars. And that is just a number that's not reasonable. So Councilman Allen's suggestion of twenty-five hundred dollars would be my adjusted recommendation. The ten thousand I can live with, if it's all fit to give, or to change that authority to fifteen thousand, it would be appreciated. But my priority would be to change that five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars.
I've got some questions.
Councilman Clay?
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the direction we're going in, is some kind of a compromise. And I think an important thing that you mentioned, city manager, was the fact that we do have the docket sign system. Councilman Gay mentioned docket sign by name specifically. And that way, you know, it does not get to you under that system, as I understand it, unless they have signed off on it. So what we're relying on is that if somebody burns you, if one of your department heads burns you by not looking seriously at what they're signing and taking responsibility, then you exact what needs to be exacted to get them in line.
Yes.
And that's what we're paying you for. So I think the docket sign does make a difference. And to your point, it does automate the system and make it a lot easier to process. So if I understand you, it sounds like you'd like, you'd be willing to compromise, or feel good at compromising at the top level, which is now twenty-five thousand, to bring that down to fifteen thousand. Lord knows, we know that what's on the books right now at five hundred dollars, I think, is way, way too low, just considering inflation. So that would come up to at least a thousand dollars. Is that?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, okay. So that would be twenty-five hundred, and that would be the department director or their designee. So they'd be handling, yeah, that makes, that's right, twenty-five hundred. And then what about the levels in the middle? So the highest level would be fifteen thousand. The lowest level would be twenty-five hundred. And what about the two in the middle, then? At the point at which we do the open market purchase, is on there now between a thousand and five thousand, or that was a proposal. So that wouldn't be five thousand anymore. It'd probably be twenty-five hundred and and what, Moody, Willis?
Twenty-five hundred, unless you want to do twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five hundred would be at that level, being raised from the five hundred. So the, was that less than greater to?
So it'd be like twenty-five hundred to five thousand? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, that is going back to the twenty-five hundred.
I can't hear you, Althea.
The third, the next level would go up from twenty-five hundred and one cents to fifteen or ten, or keeping it at the ten, and anything above that.
Why not make that ten thousand, and then, does that make sense? Make that ten thousand, and then the city manager is fifteen thousand?
Yeah, that would go up to, no, it would go up to the fifteen thousand. And anything over fifteen thousand would then go out for competitive bid. So.
So read off the levels clearly, so I can hear them.
Okay, no requisitions, anything under a thousand. Anything over a thousand and one cents to twenty-five hundred will require the department directors to obtain three informal competitive quotes. Then the next level would be the city manager's required approval level, which would be twenty-five hundred and one cents up to fifteen thousand. And that would include contracts. He would have to also sign off on those contracts, anything between twenty-five hundred and one cents to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Then the final level would be anything over fifteen thousand and one cent would have to come back to the council for approval.
And you and I've had the going back and forth discussion as well, clarifying the statements in there about whether it's city manager, contracts or not contracts, and so forth. I don't want to go through that. We've spent enough time on this. Okay, so that's a compromise I could live with, guys.
Councilman Carter?
Well, a couple of things. I think five hundred dollars is a bit low. I think fifteen hundred dollars would be appropriate. In terms of overall beyond that, any expenditure over ten thousand dollars needs to come to this body, point blank, period. And I understand East Point is at twelve thousand, and this city is at this thousand, and this city is at that amount. But those cities aren't College Park, and we have to keep track of our money, regardless of how other cities are keeping track of theirs. And over the years, we've done a pretty good doggone job of keeping track of our money, and we used to have a very strong reserve balance, because we kept tight reins on the money being spent, and it came back up here. You know, I'm very conservative with my family's money. I'm very conservative with monies, you know? I have publishing and so on and so forth. I'm the treasurer of my church. Every Sunday, I count the money and take that police escort to the bank and make sure that money's deposited, and we've never missed a dime. I'm on my board of directors. I'm the treasurer of Concerned Black clergy of Metro Atlanta. I'm not an accountant, but I used to play one in Fulton County, I always say. So docket sign solves the signature issues. I would be okay with fifteen hundred dollars from five hundred dollars. There are a couple of things that I think would have to happen here, because at the end of the day, we're accountable to the residents. And my obligation is to the taxpayers of College Park first and foremost, and I gotta make the best decision for their benefit and for their taxpaying money. Before we do something like this, I think we need to reconsider our audit process. City manager, we have talked about this before when we had our audit up here, and in particular, our city auditor. And for the residents that weren't at that meeting, all cities have an audit process where they have to be reviewed to make sure things are above board in terms of financial procedures and policies. I think the problem is, we've been with the same auditor for the past, what is it, Althea? Sixteen or seventeen years?
I'm not sure, but we did go out for a bid, and when I arrived in twenty eighteen, we went out for a competitive bid back in twenty nineteen, early twenty nineteen, and they won the bid again.
It was the same.
Yep.
And this is for the public's benefit. For the past sixteen years, we've been going with the same auditing department. Why is that an issue? Well, every year, we basically pass with flying colors. A few small deficiencies here or there, but no major significant issues. Every single year, y'all. I think that's very peculiar, and like I said at that meeting several months ago, when we talk about a forensic audit and a financial audit, I'm looking for problems. But if you're contracted with the city, and you have a stellar record, and you're on a sixteen-year roll, an auditing company is a business, and I'd imagine you want to keep that business, which is fair enough for them. But it may not be the best choice for us. I want some fresh eyes put on our financing and how we're spending our money. And again, that's nothing to our staff at all. I want some new eyes to take a look, because if you've been passing us with no significant issues for sixteen years, I think it's time to have another look, because I want to make sure that we're okay. So I would like to see our auditing revised and processed with some new eyes before we look at something like this. We trust staff to do what they're supposed to be doing, no question. But at the end of the day, my citizens and my residents aren't gonna be looking at finance department. They're gonna be looking at me. So I think anything over ten thousand dollars needs to come to this body. I think that is high, considering the amount of fund balance we've lowered to over the years, where we used to be five thousand, and we had strong fund balances. Obviously, social and economic and the things that have happened have changed. That goes without saying. But there's a reason why we were that high. It's because we were very conservative with our money. But loosening up things right now, I don't think is a good idea. I think that would be a financial mistake. So.
Councilman Allen?
Okay. I think with the cost of materials going up, supply chains, and getting things ordered in a matter of time, I think docket sign has been a great approval. And thank you very much, Mr. Hicks back there, for pushing that through. I think with the docket sign, our city manager is requesting that we go with the twenty-five hundred into fifteen thousand, and that would be my recommendation.
Councilman Gay?
I think you got it backwards. I think it's fifteen hundred.
Twenty-five hundred for department directors.
Twenty-five hundred for department directors. Fifteen thousand is my recommendation for city manager level, but the twenty-five hundred is most important. If we had to leave it at ten thousand to get the department directors up to twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred is just the minimum number.
For directors?
Department directors, yes.
I just need two things. I would like to go back to getting the city manager report, the financial report. Is that a problem?
It's not a problem.
That would be my contingency, that we get that going forward. And then the second thing is that if we would look at, I don't know what it's called, but it's when all your purchases by department go through one procurement process.
Centralized.
Huh?
Centralized location.
Yeah, like say, so maybe recreation, don't buy, go to Sam's, and IT go there, and then we're all over the place. I think you can buy a lot of this stuff through a single procurement process.
We are doing that with, where a lot of the companies are using, vendors are using.
If we can, I would be okay with the increase, if we can look at those two contingencies.
Ms. Flor Bradley, I have a couple of questions for you. In regard to our yearly audit process, that's not a forensic audit, is it?
No, the forensic audit goes much deeper. It takes a significant period of time, and you have to basically, it has to be done by location. It just can't be one company. What we're doing now is a comprehensive audit, so that's totally different from forensic.
It is.
It'll be more tailored to a certain area, and you're looking, deep diving into those files, like looking at every single invoices where they basically do a random, and they have a system that randomly pick some of our invoices, and they look at those, and they're normally in the higher range. So it's totally different.
And I believe Malden Jenkins has made recommendations for those types of audits, correct?
Yes.
Also, I want to clarify, I heard some concerns about our fund balance, and our audit actually tells us what our fund balance is at the conclusion of each fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yes.
So back in twenty nineteen, prior to the pandemic, I'm looking at the audit report, and it said the unassigned fund balance, and that would be the reserves, correct?
Correct.
The general fund was twenty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-seven thou, twenty-one million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars.
But can I take you back to twenty eighteen, prior to us transferring ten million dollars of the general fund balance to the arena, to fund the arena project? So it was ten million dollars, basically, was transferred from the general fund reserve to fund the arena project, too.
So that was back in twenty eighteen?
Yep.
So, but pre-COVID, we had twenty-one million dollars and change, about sixty-three and a half percent of the general fund expenditures, correct?
Correct.
And with the audit ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, having gone through COVID, we actually had more money, didn't we? Twenty-one point nine million, which was seventy-four percent of the general fund expenditures. Is that correct?
Well, is that the, because we were at sixteen million at one point, and now we're back up to the twenty?
Right.
Yep, correct.
Right. I think in twenty twenty-one, we dipped.
We dipped to sixteen, correct. And we should be at twenty-three now, I believe.
As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, they said twenty-one point nine. So we may have actually increased since then, but.
We will.
And so we also had an opportunity for Standard and Poor's to give us a credit rating and evaluate the city, correct?
Correct.
And that was earlier this year, correct?
Correct.
And prior to that evaluation, we had a credit rating of double A minus, correct?
Correct.
And that credit rating actually was, excuse me, improved and raised to double A, correct?
Correct.
Without the minus.
Correct.
And that reflected a stable outlook for the city's finances.
That's correct.
Are you concerned about our general fund reserves at this time?
Nope, not at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Flor Bradley.
I've got a question.
I've got some other questions. So are you comfortable with the recommendation of the city manager of twenty-five hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yes, I am.
All right. We'll go back through one more time. Councilman Clay?
I definitely think we need to increase some things. I definitely think we need to increase some things. What we read off, uh, the last time I was commenting, the previous time I was commenting, I think disagreed with what Councilman Carr said. I had fifteen thousand, I was going along with the city manager's secondary recommendation, which was fifteen thousand, I believe. And, um, that set of numbers and Councilman Carr is saying he'd like to hold it at ten thousand. I don't have a problem with fifteen. I think that the numbers that we read off last time around when I was discussing it, are good numbers. I understand where Councilman Carr's coming from, uh, but there's been a lot of inflation and I think we, we need to give more wiggle room and not get bogged down in as much paper. And I'm gonna trust the city manager to, uh, if somebody's DocuSign saying they've reviewed it and they're good with it and it goes wrong, that he's gonna take action. We're gonna rely on him to take action, that's his job and, and correct that. So I'm still good with his fifteen thousand dollar level and, and all the others that we, you can read it back if you want, but all the others that, uh, we said.
Oh, you want me to read it off again?
Yeah, read them off again, just.
Okay, just to make you comf, okay, the first, um, item, which is, uh, no requisitions required, make, excuse me, no purchase orders required, anything less than a thousand.
That's with a thousand, that was the first one?
Yes, then we move on to the, um, three informal competitive quotes for the department director's approval. That's anything over a thousand and one cents to twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, okay.
And the second, the, excuse me, the third item, we're moving to twenty-five hundred and one cents to fifteen thousand. And that requires three informal, um, competitive quotes.
That's fifteen, yeah.
Excuse me, go ahead.
That's fifteen thousand and then the, the last one is also fifteen thousand.
It's fifteen thousand and one cent, um, will come back before council for approval.
So we can, I, I would be comfortable going there if we want to compromise, uh, and Councilman Carr wants to go along with what East Point is doing, at least we wouldn't be more careless than East Point. We could settle at twelve thousand, five hundred in between fifteen and ten and.
That also includes the city managers of, of the.
Yeah, for, for both of those numbers. The third and fourth number, twelve thousand, five hundred and.
I'm referring to the charter first, um, to update that number as well.
Part?
The charter to match what the city manager can approve is right, right now his, um, he can only approve contracts up to ten thousand. We wouldn't need that to match with.
I, I would leave the last two numbers at twelve thousand, five hundred.
The last two at twelve thousand, five hundred?
Yeah, so, so it'd be one thousand, twenty-five hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. And that would agree with East Point. It's a little bit less than I would like to see and city manager would like to see and it's a little more than what Councilman Carr would like to see. And, and I, and it's a quarter to eight and we're pretty well beating this to death. That's the end of my one.
Councilman Carr?
All right, I, I may, that sounds a little bit better to me. Uh, it's still not where I'd like to be. I would add a friendly addition to that as well. Okay, we went from five to ten. I didn't think that was a great idea, but we are where we are.
You mean from five hundred to a thousand?
Well, I'm talking about five thousand to ten, but this is years ago. The twenty-five hundred and one to fifteen K, you said three informal quotes, competitive quotes, right? That doesn't mean, that means informal quotes, that doesn't mean up here again.
No.
That means just within the department. The reason why I worry about that is because, again, you, you have, well, I don't have to tell you all, competitive quotes and bids and things can get murky when they're not out in public at the end of the day. But, okay, uh, I think with the twelve, five, it comes to this body, but I would have to insist and add to that, that anything over ten, we'd be at least notified of before we pull the trigger on it, before the city manager does. And city manager, we trust you. This is not disparaging you in any way at, at all. But at the end of the day, we've got to keep tight reins on the funds and how we're spending it and make sure that we are the gatekeepers along with you to make sure that things go as advertised. So anything over ten, I think we should be notified. That doesn't require approval necessarily, but we need to know I'm about to spend the ten stacks. Does that make sense to add to, to that? That way we're aware and, uh, doesn't require approval, but something needs to go out. You know, when you cash your check at the bank and it goes over ten thousand dollars, it has to be reported to the IRS.
Like the finance director respond to it?
Might as well keep it at ten. Because even with inflation, you're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars more and not, we're at twenty-five hundred dollars more and with inflation, we've already, we, you know, surpassed that. So if you kind of, if you want that notification, we're about to spend twenty-five hundred dollars more, we might as well keep it at ten, bring it up here.
I hear you, but inflation is not gonna be an excuse for us when the wheels come off the wagon if something happens.
For twenty-five hundred dollars more though. Twenty-five hundred.
I'd be okay with the twenty, twelve, five. I think anything over ten, we should be at least notified of that's, that's about to be spent.
I, I don't know how the system does that.
Well, it's just a simple, well, I don't think he spends that every week, just a simple email, hey, we got this expenditure, it's over ten, just wanted to give you a heads up, that's all, communications.
All right. Councilman Allen?
I'm fine with twenty-five hundred, uh, and then twelve, five, they're my two numbers. And I think that's a good compromise between the departments, the city manager and council.
Councilman Gay?
Uh, clerk, can we add the three contingencies that I asked for two to this motion, whether it's gonna make it?
It's not gonna be a motion because we're in workshop.
So you add the two contingencies to the minutes, to the records, to the manager. Can you, can you repeat the contingencies?
I, I had no issue with, uh, Councilman Gay's, uh, contingent items.
I didn't record it because it's not an action item, so it's just gonna be in the minutes.
You want me to repeat the contingencies?
Well, the record if you can, but she already captured it in the minutes, so it's not gonna be an action tonight on this one.
So we not voting on this tonight?
No, no, we're just talking about it.
But Councilman Gay, all of your additions will go into what becomes the vote eventually, just like Councilmember Clay's mind, so it's gonna be part of a future motion.
Oh, yeah, I see. Well, so those contingencies were, one, oh, we get a financial report, city manager?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yes.
Starting with the first quarter.
Cause you received that, you did receive one back in January.
And the second contingency was that, what was the second contingency that we look at, uh, a procurement process?
Centralize it, to make it more centralized, yes.
I have a third contingency and I'm sure my colleagues agree with this. I don't agree with an informal quote because oftentimes when I've done, uh, cost containment studies for governments, what we see a lot is that they don't do the due diligence in the quotes. It'd be businesses, so I'm not calling anybody dishonest, but I would like to see, they don't have to be competitive bid, but I want to see the quotes up here in the packet.
For which ones?
From any time, I'm, I'm okay with the, the change in numbers, I mean, anytime they do an informal bid, I want to see the quotes, who they came from. Like when they go out and get.
That's going to be every purchase we make.
Right, because they gotta do it anyways, right? They gotta go out and get quotes anyways, right?
Well, right now you're not receiving any and we're doing that anyway.
But, but when we start, when the department directors start increasing that spending, they get three informal quotes, correct?
Correct, so you want to see anything below fifteen hundred, you want to see all the quotes that come in.
O, over fifteen hundred?
Oh, fif, over fifteen hundred, you want to see all the quotes that come in from each purchase?
Yes.
Not fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred?
No, he said twenty-five, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred.
Two thousand, five hundred.
Yeah, that's.
How many is that gonna be?
Everything we purchase, everything, before we purchase anything, we would be sending the quotes to the council.
On, on a weekly basis?
Hold on, hold on, wait, wait, hold on, everybody, everybody's talking, hold on.
I wasn't even, you're talking.
I know you weren't, so please, go right ahead.
What I was simply saying was, the gentleman has to do it anyways, correct? He has to get out quotes anyways, he has to call three quotes, right?
Yes.
So just document it.
It is documented and it's attached to the, they have to attach it to every purchase order before, a purchase order is processed, they have to attach it.
But bring it to us at council meeting or add it to your report, add it to the quarterly report, like a Excel spreadsheet, Google Books or something. The re, the reason why is because oftentimes when you give a director the discretion to get quotes, they don't always get quotes. Then we working in good faith here and not being fiscal responsible. I'm just asking if you would document the, the three quotes.
Can we, again, as a compromise, because we're not looking to, um, to make this more paper intensive, but in line with your quarterly updates that you've requested, I would ask that we be allowed to summarize the quotations above twenty-five hundred dollars.
What, what's the summary?
It's yet to be defined, but obviously we're going to do it, uh, in a way to give the council.
Can you let us work on that as far as?
Because I've been up here and I've gone and looked at the quotes and Company A had been closed. Company B was a mailbox at Pac Mail. So I'm just trying to be a steward of the, of the money.
We understand. Mayor, I, I was actually thinking we had this item not only on the workshop, but on the, uh, business agenda, uh, so I think we can, we can move ahead and allow us to repackage based on all of the comments that have been, been received.
Yep, and I think it's a good time to take a break and we'll just handle the consent agenda in the regular, uh, meeting. So we will resume and start our regular session at eight oh five.